Okay, this meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Penn Township Wednesday, October 29th, 2014, will now come to order. We will stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Before we have our public comment, I would like to take an address probably what I think most of the crowd's about here. How many people here for the David Ziyat zoning map change request? Okay, I'd like to handle that first, move that to the front of the agenda and make that decision, then maybe these people can be excused. We have before us the request for that zoning map change out here, and we have the comments from the Planning Commission that recommended it for various reasons, and that information's all back before the Board. It is a normal procedure like this, the supervisors can either say, "We're not going to entertain it," and that's the end of it, goes away. Or you can have the public hearing, so everybody has a chance to offer their opinion at a public hearing. And it is that form that I think that both sides get to say what they have to say at a public hearing. I've talked to our solicitor here, I've talked to the other two supervisors here, and my opinion that that is the proper way that we should do it. So it is before the Board as to whether we're going to advertise and get this before the county and get it back and have a public hearing later on to move on this matter, rather than just shutting the door and saying, "No, we're not going to entertain it." That's my opinion, my opinion alone, was the wish of the Board.
I move that we consider the request for the zoning map change by David Ziyat and follow the proper procedure of scheduling and holding a hearing.
Okay, the motion. I second that motion. Okay, motion was made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. We need to set a date.
After December 1st.
After December 1st, what is the wish of the Board?
Our regular meeting in December is the 17th.
The third.
The third is authority.
I probably figured it's going to take an hour and a half, two hours.
Yeah, probably taking an hour and a half or two. Oh, it won't be long. No.
Our meeting is the 17th, it has to be before that.
15th is Planning Commission.
What's going on December 9th?
I have nothing on the calendar.
You want to put together the proposed ordinance that you want us to entertain, the exact map section, etc.
No, I'm on the other side.
Oh, are you against it?
I'm representing this. Well, I previously represented this in some bankruptcy matter. No, you got the wrong guy.
Rich, will you make six o'clock, December 9th?
What night of the week is that?
Tuesday. Trying to see if Mrs. Bell. Six o'clock. But just being an ordinance, I mean, what is it?
It would be an amendment to the ordinance.
With parcel and name and all that?
Yeah, plus you got to post and you got to do a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah, all the advertising and all that stuff.
And you have to describe the property and all the good stuff.
Okay.
And the section has to be changed, amended, and then sent to the county.
Yeah.
December the 9th, six o'clock, for the public hearing.
What's being discussed, folks, is procedurally, when someone asks for a zoning map change, we have to prepare a proposed ordinance, setting forth a description of the property, notifying the surrounding property owners, and properly advertise a hearing. And that hearing is going to be December 9th at 6:00 PM. Those who are in support of or those who may be against the zoning map change should be prepared to be here that night. And I would encourage you to have your presentation in orderly fashion because it will be stenographically recorded, and the stenographer will have to take down each individual person who decides to testify. So that does not mean that this will be approved, it does not mean it's going to be rejected, it's that there's going to be a hearing to take into consideration whether the zoning map change should be granted or not granted. That will be the 9th of December at 6:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's fair to assume there'll be no further discussion tonight in that matter?
It will be fair to assume there'll be no further discussion because it's the seventh game of the World Series tonight, Mr. Philpott. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, next item of business that I'd like to address is, we had a conditional use hearing at 6:00. Meeting now being open, the Board has a decision whether we're going to grant a request to the municipal authority for the conditional use.
Well, let them take their vote first, then we'll.
Before the Board for a vote for approval or rejection. What is the wish of the Board? Do I hear a motion?
I move the conditional use request to be granted.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made with a second, and all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Get your equipment, come out here and dictate what she has to have.
I need a sign.
Next item on the agenda is listed as executive session, it was none held from last month to this date. At this time, we can have recognition of visitors, we have Charles Stoner at Twin Oaks on the agenda.
Okay, Chuck, you're up.
I wanted to check with you in regards to Twin Oaks, the hive. It's called to my attention that the original plan called for a 30-foot wide blacktop street. That's 12 feet wider than Linton Hill. And the township, all the township requires is, what is it, 18 or 20 feet, blacktop?
20. 20. 20, Chuck.
At that time, I didn't take that on my own to make that change, I wasn't aware of it. The roadmaster supervisor at the time made the change and threw a 20-foot car away with a blacktop, which is normal. And we did that and we put the top on because I didn't want the base to be there for another minute. We did the top. I had to go by the west of the payers' schedule because we get in cold weather and we can't be putting a blacktop there.
I'd like to comment, Chuck, that the supervisor that done that at the time, neither Brian McGuire, Brian Peters, or myself, does not have that authority to make a change like that. I guess in answer to that, I took a hard look at that out there, I was out and looked at it, discussed here with Max in regards to it, I know you want to get a request on your letter of credit, and if you want to do something with that out there and still want to see that that road is dedicated to township, you'll have to make an amendment to your plan. You see what I'm saying? You can make an amendment to that plan out there, and Max has it there, what the requirements are, you're going to have to bring those shoulders up on the side though and tar and chip them, that is part of the township requirement, is it not, Max?
Yes.
Yes, but you'll have to make an amendment to your plan showing that.
The shoulders have to be tar and chipped?
Yes.
Over 2A modified?
Yes.
And you'll have to bring that up, that there's no drop off there, that it's, the shoulder's the same as the road, just like we did out here when we raised the road. We brought it in there, we brought it up the same way, and tarred and chipped it, and then have to get rid of the drop off on it out here. So that would have to be done out there.
What you're referring to as the drop off is the end of the wearing sections, about an inch and a half?
Yeah, it's inch and a half, two inches out there, a little deeper in that places, you know what I'm saying? I didn't get out and measure it, but I did drive in and I took a look at it, and that would have to be put in there, we use our shoulder paver to do it, or however they're going to do it, that's put it in there, roll, and it's required to be tar and chipped for the shoulder. Yeah, no, now Max took a look at that, we took a look at over what's township requirements. But if you make an amendment to the plan and the Board agrees to it, then you submit that amendment to plan, what you're, you can talk to Max about it, you'd have to show what he's going to do or what he's going to make a change of, and it has to be accepted by a Board of Supervisors, Chuck. And that's as much as, that's a way to keep from having to put that four-foot of paved shoulders the same as the road that they showed the whole way across in your plan. Now, that's as hard as I can take a look at, that's what we looked at, that's what we figured the easiest solution is for you, it would be to get out from underneath what was submitted. I'll let Max talk to you about that.
Yeah, Chuck, if I understand what you're looking at doing, you are looking at making that amendment to the plan instead of putting in the paved shoulders. So I took a look at what would be required to be retained to assure that you're going to finish that piece of it off. And we can make a reduction to the financial security, and what I'm looking at here, my calculation quickly tonight, is a reduction of about, is $22,392.50.
Reduce it down to that amount?
No, it would actually go down to $25,682.74, that's a quick calculation, so, yeah, I might be off a couple pennies, but that's what it looks like.
You said $2 and something initially?
I said the reduction would be $22,392.50. And if the Board's interested and willing to entertain that tonight, I will put that in a letter and send it up officially to the Board in writing.
And what would be the title, what would be his balance?
His balance would be, if I calculate correctly here right now, it's $25,682.74. And that should be sufficient to finish the, to dress off the rest of the shoulders, put the Batumina service treatment on, and finalize everything out there.
If he didn't do it.
If he did not do it, yes.
I'd much rather do the shoulders in it.
Yep.
And the modified. That's modified with tar and chip?
Yes, yes, it's actually a Batumina, it's a type 3, PennDOT type 3 shoulder, which would be, which would be the modified stone, and then Batumina service treatment, which is the double oil and chip code.
You would roll the modified in there to bring it up to grade, Chuck, and then they could double ship it with the tar, oil and chip.
And we can slope that down to the end of the existing shoulder?
And yes, because I think that existing shoulder out there, beyond it, to where your, your modified is right now is about four foot.
I think it's supposed to be a five-foot shoulder.
Yeah.
So you would have to match into the elevation on the existing blacktop and then grade that off and bring the stone up so that there's no drop off from the blacktop to the Batumina shoulder.
Okay, your concern, I'm not really about the drop off.
Right, right, there shouldn't be any drop off onto the shoulder.
And you can taper that down?
Yep.
What is the wish of the Board in granting a reduction in Chuck's law?
I can't do that.
Nope?
Hasn't filed his application on Monday yet.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Can't reduce it until you file the application for amendment, Rich is telling us, Chuck.
Rich, that could be a simple one-page cover sheet with the signature blocks on and just a change in the detail, say it's an amends.
Was he appropriate recording?
Yes.
Language, because it has to be recorded.
To be a one-sheet plan.
Yeah.
And it has to be recorded?
Yeah, because what's recorded is different.
There, that's the modifying.
Exactly, exactly.
Question, does it have to go through the Planning Commission?
Technically.
Technically, yes. Unless he puts an alteration of requirements in, asking it be for, go by the Planning Commission, come right to the Board.
Chuck, you understand we're right, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we had also on recognition of visitors Susan Kistler, she, I believe, has left.
Yes.
And that brings us up into public comment section.
Roxanne. Roxanne. Henry?
No, no, thank you.
Cece?
Not at this time.
Terry White? And David White? Got any questions, comments or questions? Chuck Tuckins? Bob Gaus? Linda Gaus? Gerald Klein? Chuck, anything else? Chuck, anything else? Anything else, okay. Craig?
Very quickly, just to thank you to the residents and the supervisors here in the Township for your ongoing support of the EMS service that's provided by Dunn County EMS. As always, should there be anything you need from us, please let us know. Still waiting some contact from Henry to explain or answer any of the concerns that were brought forth, I believe, in July, in relative to our 2013 end-of-year report. So I'd be happy to make that meeting at your convenience. Thank you.
Okay, I will get with you, Craig, I've been on the weather lately.
We're rapidly approaching 2015, I just want to turn those answers to bet. Thank you.
Okay.
Rob Tichschafer? He's on the, he's with the conditional use request. Mr. Ziyat, is he still here?
He's not here.
Jesse?
No, thank you.
Mr. Philpott left, Susan left, Bruce Jaeger?
No comment.
Okay, Bill Wright?
He left.
Okay, Mary Wacht Wright? Jim Barrick? Must have left.
No, don't.
Sean O'Shea?
Yeah. Can I just say what I want to say, I guess?
Are you, yeah.
I'm with the Dunn County Appalachian Trail community. We had signs put in a while ago, Stanley Mutzabah's put them in his shopping center area. We would like to put another sign up by Tubby's where the Appalachian Trail goes in. Is, are you familiar with that area? Okay, basically, we cleaned up Pop Rock, we want to put up a sign that says, "No littering, try and keep Pop Rock beautiful." We'd like to put it right by the trailhead, so everyone who goes into the trail will see it, and I'm curious as to whether we'd be allowed to put a sign in that area.
It would be off our township right of way.
In road is?
Well, off the sign up, you're going to put, you're going to set it right out in the road or off to the side?
How far would it have to be?
Sixteen and a half feet from the center gets you in private property or off of our right of way.
Okay, I think we can do that. And that doesn't involve you in any of that.
That wouldn't involve us, unless you're going to put a huge in there that beats...
Flashing lights?
Yeah.
Sign permit?
Yeah, you need a sign permit to come in for township to put there. How big is it?
Probably 18 by 24.
Yeah, yeah, you come in, pick up a sign permit off of her, then you can do it, yep. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Joyce Hand? Yeah, if you want to, or do you want to wait until the SEO report?
I don't know, you tell me how.
Which do you gentlemen wish? She's under the SEO report.
Well, if you just make your comments, you can make comments now, but we won't be taking any action until we put it in the agenda.
She wants to wait. Wayne Looper? Nope. Brian Warner?
Byron.
Sorry.
Just one thing, I, with the Dunn County Fire Company, it's, it gets challenging when we deal with three or four different municipalities, having to go back and forth between one or the other. And I had discussed, we had informal discussions before about establishing some sort of committee, and I think Rich would be able to instruct or guide us on how we could go about it without violating sunshine laws, et cetera, if we could have committees or whatever, kind of like we did with the fire study. But I would like to link Penn Township, Wheatfield Township, and the Dunn County Borough together in some sort of fire protection committee and get it off the ground that way, and associate Reed Township with it. I don't know how much their participation would be, being how small they are. The logistics of it, whatever, for discussions, for, you know, the supervisor from Penn Township could ask for Wheatfield Township something directly in these meetings, you know, to get, I think we could get a little more accomplished of being on the same page, open communications between all of us, you know, just something like that, something for the supervisors to think about. I had brought this to the attention of Wheatfield Township at their last meeting, and we'll do so with the Borough at the next meeting. Just looking for feedback, information, doesn't have to come tonight, just like to get something started, maybe eventually expand it to include representation from our senators or state representatives, people like that, you know, for funding grant purposes and things like that to expand upon the fire protection, so.
Who's going to set the committee up, Byron?
I, you know, I brought it up at Wheatfield last month, I would, I would think, I would imagine with Penn and Wheatfield Townships, you'd only be able to have one representative from the township because of sunshine law, correct? So I would, I would think it would be up to you guys to pick a representative, or if you'd like to do it on a rotating basis, or however the township would like to, what they would recommend, or if one person would take it upon himself, or, like I said, round table it, or however we'd like to do it. I don't even, like I said, I never even thought of any logistics of it yet, whether we'd meet quarterly, you know, however we'd set up a meeting schedule, but I'd just like to try and get the ball rolling on the, on the subject to bring everybody kind of together and maybe thinking right now and, you know, maybe get something off the ground next year sometime.
I'm going to pick out some dates of it, suit, submit them to the township.
Could do that.
If you want to do something to get something like that kicked off, pick a date out to those people you'd like to see involved, see how we make out.
Okay, we have the Wheatfield and Reed Township meetings for next, next week, so I'll definitely bring it up again at Wheatfield Township, bring it up at Reed Township, to see what their representation would be. I will share with everybody here that doesn't know that obviously Reed Township is a small part, a small township, low tax base, but what they did do for us last year was, we were able to get some casino grant money from Dolphin County, buy Reed Township actually sponsoring the grant, and they got us for, they got $113,000 from the gaming grant for us for 20% of the cost of our new rescue bumper that we bought in 2012. So that was, that was a pretty sizable grant from them. I mean, they, their fire protection is like $1,000 a year, and the relief money we get from them is like $600 or $700 a year. So that $113,000 was a nice shot in the arm from Reed Township. And that, I was, in my vision of this thing, I think that is their involvement of this is gaming money, so.
Brian? Will your meetings be advertised and open to the public?
We haven't worked that out.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Next, Helen.
Anyway, have a question for you, you said the bumper you purchased, when did you purchase that bumper?
2012.
2012. Do you have any plans on buying any new equipment within the next couple of years?
With our financial situations? No. Grant money and stuff like that changes those, that's kind of what the committee's about. Capital, the capital needs of the fire company over the next five to 10 years.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Helen?
Mike Conroy?
No comment at this time.
You're actually here. Matt Rice?
Yeah, I just want to bring up again, I brought it up at the last meeting we had, I have a copy here of the cease and desist that was issued to Mr. Morrison. And part of that violation was failure to have the highway occupancy permit for Clayel Trail. You guys said that you were going to look into that, and the solicitor was not at the last meeting, at least at that time, so.
I think the solicitor does have a comment on, in regards to that. As to whether that would be deleted, Rich?
Yeah, we've received an indication that they're not going to use any access off Clayel Trail Road for the property, therefore, there will be no permit necessary.
Right, but as your letter still stands, without him applying for that permit, he's still in violation, right? And just because he tells you, "I don't need it," but still as it, as it stands, well, you sent it to him until you sent out a new one saying you no longer need it.
And what I'm looking at is the letter that was sent by the Board to him, June 2nd.
Correct.
And it talks about the certificate of occupancy not being given to occupy that building until...
Oh, that's right, hit this one, I'll see.
Yeah, yeah, and his response was, "I'm not going to use it for commercial purposes," which is the requirement under the section of the ordinance for which he would need the highway occupancy permit, if he's going to use it for commercial purposes.
Pardon? Pardon for the word, for sure.
The ordinance is commercial.
That's what the cease and desist said.
It does, I see what you're saying there, where it says for commercial vehicles, but doesn't this still stand until you reissue a letter telling him what his violations are, that even though he tells you, "Well, I'm not going to..."
Well, there's still a number of violations he's been cited for, that was just one of them.
Certainly, and that's what I'm saying, I'm asking, I guess, to get that removed because aren't you guys basi- I'm asking, I guess, to get that removed because aren't you guys basically asking him to get that highway occupancy permit for Foyle Trail by listing it as a violation?
If he's going to use it for commercial purposes. Because that's what the trigger is, that you need a HOP, H-O-P, if you're gonna use it for commercial purposes. He, he responded by saying, "I'm not using it for commercial purposes, therefore, I don't qualify, uh, under the HOP. I don't qualify to, to have to have a highway occupancy permit to use the premises 'cause I'm not gonna use it for commercial access."
Okay, so basically, that at this point then doesn't matter if he fails to...
It, it matters. It matters if it's learned that he's using it for commercial purposes, then it matters. But as long as he doesn't use it for commercial purposes, we're just gonna require the HOP for that.
Thank you.
Next, Helen?
Okay, um, yes, here. Uh, Annette?
We're in from Wheatfield Township. And, um, I wasn't really saying anything, but I was listening to, um, more about the fire company, Wheatfield Township. I think, um, I would like to see it, one of the representatives poorly, if you, you know. So, if you wanna, I think that would be, uh, the minimum, it would be good.
Lee Wright? Lee?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Fickle? Les Brubaker. And Mary. Did they leave? Okay. Uh, Steve Bradley?
No.
Chuck, did you sign twice?
I, oh, I only signed once.
Okay. Um, Cindy Radel? You're with Joyce. Ann Carper? Connie Betts? Paul Sebasov, Sebasovik. They're all with Twin Oaks. Uh, Becky Howard? Matt Fritz? Tony DeLelis? Lisa Landis?
No comment.
Robin?
No comment.
Stanley?
Henry, where are we at with the E M S truck?
That motion was made and approved last year. Stands as said, that was a carry through, uh, when the motion was made to, uh, make Officer Pickles the E M S truck.
And have him through the governor's office and through the county?
Yep.
It's all valid, yeah. So, I'm gonna write you now and see that paperwork?
Sure.
Okay.
Which paperwork are you asking for? The letter that we sent up to county? Oh, okay.
In from the governor's office.
Haven't received that one yet.
Am I correct, the governor's office has to approve it?
Yes, it's approved.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, it was, it was received.
It was received.
Received, yeah.
So, we got a letter back approving it?
Yeah.
Letter didn't get lost, we have it? Not being wise, bud?
No.
Who's asking?
Yeah, I, yeah, I haven't seen it today, but yeah, it's, it's here.
Thank you.
I sold the letter, put it came back, and I'm not sure where it's at, but I did see the governor's office.
Thank you.
Um, Owen Laird? I guess not. And Joe Burgett?
Good evening. I just wanna take five minutes of your time here. I received the condition, condition statement letter from you guys on the Holman Plan. One of the items in here said it, "An improvement bond if necessary." Um, I just want, if it's necessary, we'll put it together. I just wanna get clarification if I need to do that or not. Only thing he's doing is that pond in the back. It's in any earth disturbances, so if we need to put a bond together for the grading of that pond?
You guys didn't decide if it was necessary or not yet?
Yeah.
Was the plan approved?
We were waiting, we were waiting for approval for somebody, was it D E P or someone?
Sewer authority. I have a meeting next week, I have a meeting with them next week.
We were waiting for approval or something from that authority.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have that approval?
That's next week.
Okay, so you guys are waiting for the approval of the authority or act on the plan?
No, they acted on it.
No, the, the plan, they approved it conditionally.
Okay.
Okay.
With those conditions?
With the conditions.
Yes.
And one of the conditions says, "An improvement bond if necessary." So, that's what we're trying to do.
Here's a guy.
See, you're gonna get where this is?
Holman's is the landscaping place down here on fifteen, between the railroad tracks and fifteen. Before, right before you get to where all that storage is of all the materials on the left, where the stockpile and all that dirt stuff.
Max, it's called the Sam Smith Plan.
That's right.
That's the one that I walked in, Max, it was from way, way back, was never finished, never completed, just left black.
This is a stormwater pond for down in the bottom.
Down on the bottom.
Well, I, I think that's the board's decision as to whether you wanna have a letter of credit to guarantee that he will actually do the work.
The question is what work needs to be done?
And there, there's some grading work and some improvements that need to be done.
Have we estimated the cost of that?
I have not.
I have not put anything together. And that's, I'll do it if we need to do the bond. That's, that's, I think that's the...
Question was, is, you know, my thought would be is, if you wanna guarantee that he's gonna get it done, do you have a letter of credit?
I'd get troubled if we don't because the next guy that comes in is gonna say the same thing.
Sorry. Prepare it, Joe.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's fine, let's wish the board.
I agree.
Okay.
Not a problem, thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, that's, um, did I miss anyone?
Yes, I didn't sign in.
Well, that's your problem.
I know, I do it every time, I come back the other way. I wanna thank the Penn Township, Wheat Department for their, uh, activities at our open house and that we got rid of two petals of two, we done pretty good. Three pickles didn't get back down to get some, but that's the way it is.
I heard it was the best this year, again.
Okay, Helen?
Um, anyone else in the hall? Oh, no, Karen's on the agenda.
Okay.
That's...
Invoice expenditure before you.
You're on the agenda later, or you want to sit down?
Oh, I'll wait.
Okay, there are the normal operating costs. Um, we also paid for the heating system, uh, this month. Um, we are, uh, prepared the check for the donation to the Dunkin' Fire Company, which was approved at last month's meeting. And we are, um, processing the fire relief payment, which we received from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the only things out of the ordinary.
Jay, you heard our treasurer, uh, report on the invoice expenditures, what is the wish of the board? I'll make a motion, we pay the bills. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Except for, except for two, seven, seven, three, three.
I just thought I had to take the...
No, you do it right now. You can't make the, the second.
Except for the check number two, seven, seven, three, three, for my two associates, which I abstained from because I work part-time for two associates.
Okay, motion made for the second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Now, you have to have a separate vote on two, seven, seven, three, three, 'cause that was not seconded.
Okay, do I hear a motion to pay bill two, seven, seven, three, three?
I second.
Okay, okay, I'll take that, I made the motion second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
I second.
Okay. Okay. Uh, you have before you the treasurer's report. Libby, anything unusual?
Um, we received the payment for, from the state for, uh, the pension aid, um, which was over sixteen thousand dollars. Um, we received a check from Blue Ridge Cable for the franchise fee of fifteen thousand dollars. And we received a payment from capital tax for earned income tax.
Okay. What is the wish of the board for approval that rejects the treasurer's report?
I'm sure the treasurer's report be accepted subject to audit.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Motion made for the second, all those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. You have before you the minutes. For September twenty-fourth and October the fourteenth, at the budget meeting. What is the wish of the board for approval of the minutes?
I make the motion that we accept both minutes of October fourteenth, two thousand and four, the budget meeting, and also the regular board of supervisors meeting, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Second the motion. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, second. Along part of the minutes that were, uh, approved here tonight, there was one item in there that I read over thoroughly. I listened to it on the tape. And although there's approval what it was on the tape, I'd like to offer some comments on it for clarification for next month, that it be made a matter of the record. Referred to the letter from the E M S to Mr. Fickles that was presented to us and made look like this board of supervisors did not put that information out. That information was received by this board, was shared with all supervisors. And yes, Helen and I stood there when Mr. Fickles was here, and I said, "It's not coming before the board."
Yes.
Will not, because it was a personal thing, an item that was not township-related. It was mailed to Newport State Police, Penn Township Police Department, Perry County Communications, Emergency Health Services Federation, West Shore Emergency Medical Services, and Penn Township Supervisors. I, to this day, cannot understand why a letter of that size was forwarded to the supervisors when it strictly was not anything to do with a township matter. I'd like that made part of the record. I would not let it come on the floor, it didn't belong here. That is correct. Highway report. Fall cleanup. I would like to thank for all those that were involved in that day. We had three busy days. Many used this service, and I would say, though, it wasn't as large as it was last year. Uh, but, uh, took an awful lot of stuff out there, and a lot of people were grateful for that service. Uh, we trimmed extreme amount of brush and trees on Barre and Y M C A. You took notice out there, Lester?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And a busy schedule, we finally got around to it. I hope we got them back far enough for you, for those campers.
I never complained about them under pressure, but they were back.
I know, they, I was out and looked, uh, where the campers and whatnot, gotta get on that soon to get free. So, we took care of the brushed trees on Barre, Y M C A, some at Saint John's. We have several trees that are leaning towards power and communication lines out here that we intend to take down here before these services are interrupted or broken down. Uh, we have, uh, have those yet to do. And we keep looking for these trees that are leaning the wrong way and dead and gonna cause trouble. And if we can possibly take them down, we take them down. We did some moan on Hoffman Road out there, take some high grass. We had a resident out there that thought that it impacted site distance. We've made repairs on Watch Drive, Cove Road, Sawmill, Holman Drive, Schoolhouse Road. I would like to give a special thanks to Marstella Concrete for the donation of free concrete to fix that turn coming in to Schoolhouse Road. The trucks come around that corner, and we've worked there while they go around, and they surely can stay on that road. They didn't run over any of my employees or myself. But the minute you leave, they tore our signs down, they run our cones down, they run our ribbons down, and deliberately run the shoulder back down again and filled it back up. So, I made arrangements with Marstella down there to clean it up, repair it, and pour concrete in there. They must've given us about two and a half, three yards to fill that in. They can drive on it all they want now, and they're not gonna tear it all. They were very kind. We have the same thing at the old schoolhouse, and I'm trying to get Booger to comply with and see if they won't donate some concrete there to fix that one up. The damage is done by the trucks, although I can't understand why they gotta get the corners so short. If you're standing there, they can make the turn without getting off the road. I just don't understand it. But that's what you deal with out there. Uh, line painting, we've painted the roads, uh, that's been authorized. Just as soon as the line painters get in here, we'll get these, these roads, the line paint. We marked the centers of them, so they're ready to go. Highland down over the hill here where we got the spade worse, that's our next project, which needs completion before winter weather. Trying to get a couple of things done here the rest of the week. We need to get on that and have that done. We're making prep for ass from P P and L Brunner's Allen. Much cheaper, gonna be a better product. We won't have these stones by the bushels all over the township. And so, we found another source at three dollars a ton. That would be approximately twelve, fifteen bucks for a truckload for us to, to convey it in here or else pay to have it haul. And road salt, we're getting forty-four tons of road salt tomorrow.
Good.
So, our bin will be full out here. And, uh, that's about all I have on, uh, road work out here. And, uh, trying to, uh, hope that we have a decent winter without so much ice on. The ice is more than worse than the snow. I'd like to take the time to offer at the present time, uh, I put it in the newsletter and whatnot, and there was so much fuss about it in the past about economic growth being stymied in this township. I know this don't belong into the highway report, but I'll move on with it. So, I made a plea at the meeting for anybody that would wanna be willing to serve on the committee and show us where the planning commission, the board of supervisors is doing this. I thought surely by now I'd have some volunteers. I put it in the newsletter. I haven't heard anything from anybody that's willing to serve on the committee to show where we're stymied economic development or to take an effort to bring businesses into this township. I did get an interest today from one individual that says that, that they may be interested in it. And I'd like to see that move on. Once again, I extend the opportunity to anybody that wanna sit down on a board like that. I would be glad to pass on to you the township ideas and, and bring something back to his and show us where there can be something done that's gonna change that. I'll take, willing to listen, show us where we're wrong. That's all I have underneath the highway report. Uh, that, Helen, I'll move on to Penn Township Planning Commission.
I have a question for you, Mr. Holden.
Yes.
Has there been any improvement on any township properties, roads, driveways since our last board meeting?
Yes.
And where was that at?
Wherever we're working along the road where we find that there's need for patching at driveways, okay? Uh, where there's drainage issues, we take care of them. Mailboxes, one of them is soon to be done, is on, isn't done, but I talked to a mail lady the other day because I thought the mailbox may be too high as fours on Sawmill. That needs to be done, okay? Uh, the, uh, road patching and the ones that we do out through Barre out there, we make sure that those mailboxes out there where we get the muddied sections or whatnot, that we get them. Sometimes you'll be out there, you only repair just the section in front of the mailbox. If you want a complete list of them, why, I can give them to you.
Okay, I was just, I actually, there is a tension here. I noticed that on the property in Perdix, um, that we acquired some years ago, that one day I drove past, it was a muddy dirt road driveway going up to that property, and now it's a stone road.
Yes, we put some, we put some modified in there so it isn't wet and so that it's, and rolled it in there to make it stabilized.
Thank you.
Yep, I put the modified in there and rolled it in. Nothing but water and stuff that comes out of that, that bank down there, uh, and that, that... Yes, we did do that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Question, Henry?
Yes.
You talked about cutting trees. What about that one on eleven and fifteen there in front of that stone house?
Lee, come on, we've been through that a thousand times. Penn Dot won't do it, it's private property. And you talk to utilities, and when it comes down, then they'll do something about it. Until then, I'm sorry. Township itself has no jurisdiction over that. I have one on Schoolhouse, if you take a look, gonna fall over. Beg them people to do something about it, talk to the utilities about it. When it comes down, it's gonna smash them down, then they'll fix it.
Well, the only problem is, that's a heavy-traveled road, I hate to see that come down.
Well, we've been through this before, how many times, and done everything we could. We sent the letters to Penn Dot, to all the utilities, to everybody, and the response you get back is negative. Negative. Absolutely negative. Absolutely negative.
We've had, we had with the storms down there and all, we had the people coming to cleaning up the trees for the Pendot, and we asked them if they would go up and look at those one or two trees, and they went back to utility, and the utilities wouldn't give them permission to go ahead and take them trees out.
Give you permission.
Yeah, we tried, we tried that when the storms, you know, when the birds were cutting the storms.
If that tree comes down, who's liable for it, Jay, it's a car.
I don't know. I don't think anybody.
I know it's been hassled around enough that I'm not willing to spend any more time talking about it. Do the best you can. We've done our share, we've done everything that we could possibly do to have that tree taken down.
How does that not call to be a codes issue? I mean, if it's a safety hazard, and forgive me, I haven't been here for the back and forth discussion, but I'd help you understand if you would.
I wish I could understand why somebody couldn't do something about it, it's just the utilities.
But I mean, the township is, you can enforce a code, couldn't you?
Not on private property.
On private property?
You can't go on private property and correct problems on private property, that's a responsibility to private property owner. That's why we put them a notice, so that if something does happen, and God forbid somebody gets hurt, but if they get hurt, they come back to the township, we find out, we put them a notice, that would give them a cause of action against the landowner.
And just for comparison, and maybe examples aren't just, but I know the borough will issue citations and fines if someone has a dead tree on their property, and the codes officer will visit and say, "30 days to cut this down, it's a danger to the community. If you don't do so, you'll be fined." Does Penn Township have that authority?
I don't know that we have an ordinance of that nature.
Do we have an ordinance against blighted trees?
I don't think we have an ordinance like that.
Can one be started?
I'm sorry?
Can one be started?
It could, but in due respect to a person that owns 100 acres of trees, how could we ever enforce it against them?
Well, if you're looking at public safety.
Typically, it's a street tree.
You could argue a hunter walking out through the woods, and there's a dead tree that the homeowner didn't take down, or the landowner didn't take down, it's a safety hazard also.
Is this tree up against a public highway?
It becomes a question of the, just enforceability of, or lack thereof.
I take down as many of them as we can in the township, they're ever hanging, touching the utility wires unless they're electric, we've cut a tremendous amount of them back because utilities won't, and they're bearing the lines down and whatnot, and it's there, it's just one of those things. Make it quick, Jess.
About those trees, there's one, I don't know if it's on my property or the neighbor's property, along Creek Road, it's dead and could be a hazard, if you wanna drive by and look at it.
I'll take a look at it.
Please do.
Because if we don't know some of them are there, we can't get them, and if they're feasible, then we can, we will.
That's why I brought it up, so you can know it's there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Penn Township Planning Commission.
They received a letter of resignation from Mr. Oaks, and they have recommended that you gentlemen accept it, so they can start looking for someone else.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept Charlie Oaks' resignation from the Planning Commission.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
That's all I have on our Planning Commission.
Okay. County report?
You have that in front of you. Nothing unusual on it.
Okay.
With the, I'm sorry.
Have to set a date for devil.
No, that's the next thing.
Oh, okay.
The next thing is the Patrick Devlin conditional use, we need to set a hearing date for that, and the 60 days is December 1st, so we have to do it before December 1st.
Okay, pick a date, gentlemen. I don't think that would be.
We could actually do that one before our meeting.
Well, I would do that before a meeting.
I'm just checking the advertisements.
Would you wanna do that before the meeting, 6 o'clock? Six, the looks of it, I don't think that's gonna be fine with that. Meeting night.
You have the package in your things.
Okay, Storage Enforcement Officer, report, Helen.
You have it before you, the only thing unusual, it was the collection of a sample for 1109 State Road.
Okay.
Which you gentlemen should have received in your inbox, the results of.
Okay.
Life is good.
And under the SEO, we have Joyce Hand.
Okay. You're up.
Hi, I've been working on opening a business in Duncan for the last year, and the last thing that I need to do is figure out what to do with my graywater, so this is what I have in mind, I'd like to put 15 gallon, 12 gallon, actually, totes inside my trailer, my concession trailer, under the sink, and I brought pictures of them to show you what they look like. And I have permission, a written agreement, from John Cunningham, at the owner of the Riverfront Campground, he will let me use, or dispose of my graywater at his campground for a fee, he gave me a signed letter for that, and this would basically just be a chore that I would do every night at closing, I would take, I would pull my graywater tanks out of my trailer, and put it in the back of my car, and drive it to his site. Also, a gentleman at the PCRA campground, the YMCA campground on Delville Road, which I live right near that campground, his name is Bill Stone, he's the president of the board at that campground, and he said that he would give me permission to dispose of my graywater there, they have a graywater disposal. He said that he would give me permission, but he has to take it before his board, which is coming up in a couple weeks, and so I don't have a signed paper from him, but I will have two places that I can dispose of my graywater, right here in Duncan, every night when I close, I'll be able to take my graywater there and dispose of it. My graywater is just gonna be, you know, washing hands, washing dishes, washing vegetables, maybe, you know, a little bit of cleaning, biodegradable cleaning things, but I, Helen told me that I need to get your permission to put these graywater tanks inside of my mobile unit, it's a mobile unit, I am going to be keeping it on 1115 a lot, most of the time, but if there's ever any events that I wanna take it to, I would love to be able to take it there, so I would need some graywater tanks inside, but it is a mobile unit, it's not, you know, permanent, so it's a concession trailer.
So it's a trailer that hitches to a vacuum vehicle?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and it's fully self-contained, electric and everything, I just plug into a meter at my site on 1115, Mike Ward's property. So I've been working on this for a year, and this is the final thing that I need to take care of, so I'd like to get your permission to install these, I'm gonna have maybe three of them, and when one gets full, I can just, you know, plug it and put the other one under, but I'm sure I'll be taking one every night to the disposal sites, so I need your permission.
How do you propose to move these once they're full?
I'm gonna lift them, so 12 pounds, it's eight, eight pounds, water is eight pounds per gallon, so a 12 gallon unit, I will be able to lift myself or with my partner at the end of every night.
Even though it's all right around 100 pounds?
Yeah, yeah, I'm very strong, so I feel confident that I can, I mean, even if I have to go with a 10 pound one, but, or a 12 gallon.
Do you have wheels on it?
Yes.
Yeah, they're wheeled.
Yeah, they're wheeled.
They're wheeled, making it a little work.
And they have handles, so I, basically, they'll be under my sink, I'll just pull it out, I'll wheel it down, and when I get to the stairs, I'll lift it up, and I'll have my car backed up there, I'll put it right in the back of my Subaru, and I'll take it to.
This is an example of what we use.
Oh, yeah.
This is, whoops, sorry about that. Anyway, I camp, I have a camper, and we're totally self-contained, and if we go to a site that doesn't offer sewage, we take this along, you know, we have the proper hoses and everything to hook it up, it's almost like a camper that's self-contained is what we have in our trailer, and this is just an example of one, and it does have wheels on it. So it's no different than, you know, having a camper, it's the same, it's the same thing.
Any legal issues with these entities accepting sewage from outside sources?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Is there, are there any legal issues with either Mr. Cunningham or other campground accepting sewage from outside sources?
No, I personally been there and talked to them, and they're very willing to let me dispose of my graywater there, they have other, at least Mr. Cunningham told me that he allows other people from, that don't even use his campground to dispose of their graywater there, so.
He charges a small fee.
Yeah, he's gonna charge a small fee, and so is the YMCA campground, they're gonna charge a small fee as well, but they have legal graywater disposal.
What is this agreement with advance subject?
That was for a holding tank.
That was for a holding tank that we were gonna put outside of our trailer.
We're not doing that.
But we're not doing that because Lenny Sizer told me that DEP will never approve of that, we were gonna get it pumped out, it was gonna be a larger size, so now we're just going with a smaller one that I just dispose of every night.
No permission required from DEP or any other agency?
I don't think so.
Our sewage enforcement officer is okay with this?
I haven't talked to them. I mean.
Who's the sewage enforcement officer?
Lenny Sizer.
Well, you've talked.
Lenny Sizer, I've been talking to Lenny Sizer, Lenny Sizer thinks this is what I should do.
He was the one that recommended.
I just talked to him a couple days ago, and he told me, instead of getting an outside graywater tank, I was gonna get a 275 gallon outside tank, and he said, "Joyce, DEP is never gonna approve of this," so, because it leaves it open to vandalism, but if you could get inside totes that you can take with you at night and dispose of the graywater legally, at a legal site, then, then that's a much better way to go, so.
I haven't received anything from Lenny. I didn't receive anything from Lenny on that.
No?
No.
What about the email? The email said that she was gonna be doing that.
Is that what the email says?
Basically says that DEP will never permit the tank, and that she's going to install tanks inside her mobile unit for graywater, which would eliminate DEP, and a permit from me, but it will still need township approval as far as he's concerned.
Okay.
I mean, doesn't it specifically say it's okay?
Yeah.
He didn't voice any issues with that.
Which would still, would she still have to do a retaining tank or contract or not?
It would be advisable to have something in writing, setting forth permission to be able to dispose of that graywater, and if it's unlimited, or if there's limits to times and things of that nature from the person that's allowing her to do it.
Okay. What does your letter say?
It was something that we typed up and took it, took it to him this morning, and had him sign it.
Can you get him to say, I mean, this says dispose of graywater at the campground graywater disposal site, he's gonna let you do 10, 12, 14, 16, 18 of these containers if necessary at any time of the day or night?
Yeah, he is.
For as long as, for as long as he?
He actually said it would cost $5 every time I bring my 12 gallon tote to him.
I think it would be advisable to have him indicate that it's unlimited duration of time, unlimited number of containers, whatever he wants to charge you guys, that's up to the two of you, just so that we have some, something here, that in the event, somebody comes in and says, "Hey, these two girls are driving down the road, dumping along the side of the road," we have something to rely on, please.
Okay, so just type up a different letter?
I've assigned it.
And have him sign it? And bring it to Helen? Okay.
Is that the only thing that is required for us to do then, to get this permission granted?
Anything else that I'm aware of would be up to our SEO to decide.
Would we have to come to another meeting to present that letter?
I don't know, wait a second.
Well, that I don't know.
So the Riverfront Campground is open year-round.
The thing that concerns me is the sewer plant down there. That's, that's what concerns me.
Correct.
Well, does, the question is with the problems with the sewer plant down there, that is not being put, and not complying with DEP at the present time, are we circumventing the sewage issue on that with this, with this particular matter, that DEP's gonna oppose it? Now, Lenny can make that decision, but I know that that issue, from both of you being on the sewer authority, is an ongoing issue, that they, they cannot get him to comply down there, I don't know where we're at with that, Cece, I do remember from the past, if DEP don't have any problem with this, that this isn't going into a system there we're supposed to be, for a business, this is a business now, this isn't a camp.
It's a mobile unit, though.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, it's a business, and it'll be set up, weekends to start, and maybe.
And you're drawing water off of them down there?
Yes, we are.
For that, that's a question that I have, as to where we're at with that, Rich.
Whatever, whatever DEP, they give blessings or not, that's up to them.
Yeah.
Quick, so Mr. Arboll is with DEP?
Yes.
And has he responded to, municipal authority, has he responded to the July 24th letter from SAM referencing this issue?
We have given, if I'm not mistaken, that property down there, the next township or next municipal authority meeting to be connected in and hooked up.
Well, I mean, in reference to her graywater, it's.
That has not been discussed because of the.
Other issues.
It's an unnegotiable subject, it's not happening because of the outstanding issues we have down there already.
Okay.
Okay? And the amount of ED uses he's having there, he's giving us an idea of what he's got, system-wise at the present moment, we're still trying to get this thing, and he gets it online by the beginning of the month, and I have a feeling there's gonna be issues there. So in regards to her, if I'm not mistaken, the property owner himself says he's not allowing it to be dumped on his property anyhow.
That's correct.
Correct. He's already made that statement, she cannot do that.
So they're not gonna have an opportunity to tap into his system once it's up and going for this graywater?
I could do it, but I'm trying to work within my budget.
But he's not requiring you to do it.
No.
No, the landlord that we have for the, no, he's not requiring us to do that.
No, he's not requiring us.
So even if the system was up and running, they wouldn't be connecting to it anyway, so would we be circumventing it?
I don't know. Question, Lester, the one out to YMCA, DEP?
I'm no longer on the board.
Oh, you're not out there, I was just wondering whether the dumping station out there was certified, DEP certified, or?
I don't know.
You don't either?
I'm gonna say, once he's got his system hooked up down there, we're probably gonna require that that be hooked into that system, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, because the holding tank, you know, need to be granted for that, so you need to take a look at that. I understand.
It's a site complex down there, and by, if I'm not mistaken, by our ordinance, is the. It's a site complex down there, and by, if I'm not mistaken, by our ordinance, is that's gonna be the burden to dump in that system once it goes online. But this system's not been online, and we're having our own issues upon that predicament down there.
Well, without leaving a can of worms, you know, just, just a thought. Could we make it a condition that we would approve this type of system until he's online? And then at that time, she's required to hook up?
That's an authority decision.
Correct, well, that's what I'm saying. Is that a thought, or?
He's got...
I know the history.
There's, there's more, there's more to just one side of that as the other in regards to what he has using down there, okay?
Because he's gonna have to give...
And it's not all just sewer.
Well, he's gonna have to give them access to that in order for her business to continue or to start.
Right, but if he gets through that, then I think DEP's gonna have to get involved in it because of his...
Now, we can't hassle it around all night, I wanna move on this thing.
Okay.
This issue here, you wanna dump in up here at Dunkanen mainly, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, at the Riverfront Campground.
At the Riverfront Campground.
I wanna use his gray water disposal.
I'd like to contact Dunkanen Borough to make sure that the facility that's going in is DEP-approved. Same as what the Lions Club has next door over there. Every year, they, every two years, isn't it, they have to renew their permit?
Yes.
And, and that is an approved DEP facility?
Yes, it is.
And so, since this is in the borough, the borough should have the same issue. Wanna make sure it's going to the right place. And then that we have, a letter here is Rich required in regards to it.
Letter from Riverfront and from the borough?
Yeah.
Okay. I know what...
I'd like, I'd like to see, make sure that that facility was put in there, just something that wasn't done a long time ago, and, and it's not approved. I know they had to jump through hoops on the other side to get that approved.
And since the second source is the YMCA, we would need to send up an agreement from...
Yes.
From the campground.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
That being said, I, I can live with the issue at the present time, meet those, subject to meeting those conditions.
So... If it's a motion to okay, we need the letter amended from the Riverfront. We need a letter from Dunkanen saying it's an approved DEP dumping site, and also for, from the Perry County Rec.
Yes.
Okay.
From DEP?
That's disapproved, okay.
Yeah, that's a DEP-approved system. Because Lions Club up there, the other side had to get their approval from DEP before we could approve the holding tank.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they haven't decided.
I'd like to make the motion that, upon consideration, first that we have to get a letter stating the conditions of the contract for the riverside, Riverfront Campground?
Yeah.
And a same letter from the YMCA Park and...
Recreation.
Recreation Board. And also that both of those systems are DEP-approved to handle that gray water.
Okay.
Okay, motion may. In order to keep this moving, I'll second this upon the condition that nothing's granted until we see those papers.
Yes.
They have to be here in our hands.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Okay.
Next item, Penn Township Municipal Authority Report.
Yes, you have my report. Just very quickly, I would like to thank Stanley and Lee for all your donations for the events that we have. We have started our senior lunches up, which was a success, and Stanley donated items for that, and we donated, what, 40-some pumpkins for our Halloween party, so I would just like to thank them. And we have everything pretty much closed down for the season right now. We just are going to have our senior lunches once a month.
Thank you, Karen, Penn Township Municipal Authority.
Wait, so she's got one more thing?
Yeah, one more thing, Henry.
Yes.
The Perk Rec would like approval to donate $100 to the Dunkanen Perk Rec Board to help in their expenses of the events that they will be having.
Like the Halloween parade.
Let us wish it to the board.
I move the permission to be granted to make the $100 donation to the Dunkanen Rec Board?
Yes.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. Now, Penn Township Municipal Authority.
You have the letter that they sent out to the owner of 1109 State Road that we had that complaint on?
Okay, that's dealing with the owners.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Secretary Taylor's report.
Okay, uh, first thing I have is normally we, I ask you, uh, if you wish to do the EMS donation to be paid in November, and then how much? And the budget was $15,000. So, what's your wish?
I would make the motion that we go ahead and, uh, write a check to Dunkanen EMS for $15,000 for their end-of-the-year donation.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Okay. Uh, the next...
That was the amount that was budgeted.
Yeah, that's the amount that was budgeted.
Thanks, Ellen.
Um, the next thing I have is Morrison's bonding reduction. Uh, Mr. Morrison is requesting to have his bonding reduced.
Wow.
If, if I could, I'd...
Yes.
This is based solely on the fact that he's indicating that there's a portion of his approval and development plan that he will not be building.
At this time, yeah.
Yeah, he does not intend to ever build.
So, we will require him to do what we required Mr. Stoner to do? Submit an amended plan, and once amended plan's approved, then we can entertain the reduction.
Correct, and so at this time, in response to a bonding reduction, I, I can't certify that there should be an appropriate reduction for something that's on his plan that has not been built, so.
So, as to avoid the 45-day hassle, let's write the letter saying that, that your request has been denied and will be entertained upon the appropriate application of an amended complaint, or amended, uh, plan, removing those improvements.
If I can, I'm the engineer for Rock, um, proprietor for Malham Associates. The plan was never, it was approved as a, like, phased plan. And the headquarters in the one parking area was, um, didn't necessarily ever have to be built. And part of the bonding issues, I was not the one who prepared the bonding issue, but part of the problem is, um... If you're familiar with his site, he bonded for all this parking and everything in here that didn't necessarily ever have to be... The only concern that the township ever had was that the main road coming in and everything was bonded. The main obstruction of the drive and things like that. But they considered all the additional asphalt within that bonding.
Was that a phased plan?
I believe so, yes.
I don't remember that being approved as a phased plan. Does the plan not say preliminary final?
I believe it does.
Or full plan?
Preliminary final plan revised?
Yes.
It's a recorded plan?
Do you want us, you want us to just resubmit the plan, taking those buildings off?
I think we have to, because it's recorded.
Okay.
That'd be a good way to do it, because it looks like it's a complete plan that's been submitted. I see you have phases indicated, but you don't indicate what portions of those plan are...
Are to be built.
Are to be built, and what phase? So, the whole plan was actually approved as, as, as it exists, so. In fact, it's, it's all right in here. Including the profiles and stuff.
Self a letter to effect, Richard?
Well, we'll need an amendment indicating that can be recorded, as we said to Mr. Stoner, because someone's gonna go to the recorder, they're gonna see that plan, it has certain improvements, and we, and it's bonded, but now he's saying he's gotta do it for to reduce the bond, we have to have some amendment for that.
Okay.
Yeah, it needs to take in the buildings and whatever else off, as well as all the, any stormwater or septic or... Whatever, whatever is not, is not being, tends to not build in the future.
Yeah, there's only one stormwater pond that's not being, at this point, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take care of that, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay. Orders from Fire Company, reasonable cost, Helen?
Yes, um, after last month's meeting, I researched if, what ordinances we had for fire company to receive, or, and bill for reasonable costs. We had one for the Perdix Fire Company, back in 2000, I believe it is, for them to receive, to bill for accidents, but not for fires. This is a draft that's basically the same language, just changing Perdix to Dunkanen.
So, nothing's changed in the orders except for...
The name, the name, and the number.
Correct.
And it's only for accidents?
To cover reasonable costs for equipment materials used as such accident incidents as hazardous, hazardous material incidents, motor vehicle accidents, safety and rescue incidents, without concern of location of incident or accident, no recovery cost will be permitted for structural fires. This purpose is, purpose of this authorization is to recover costs, to recover costs is to help maintain a viable volunteer fire service to the community.
So, you're changing that to Dunkanen from Perdix? Does that have to go through the advertising and everything?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So, my question is if you want to review this more, or if you want, need to, um, advertise it for adoption?
You have to advertise it.
Well, yeah.
You have to advertise it.
That the next meeting, if you can vote to approve it, or you don't have to approve it, but at least you gotta get it on the docket to, to, to...
Make a motion, Helen, that you advertise it for the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Okay.
Okay, tax collector audit, Helen?
I'm sorry, it's supposed to be training.
Training, yes, okay.
Barbara Hamilton informed me that the governor signed a tax collector reform bill. Uh, one of the portions of this bill is that all tax collectors have to be certified. And to do that, you have to have training. And she is asking if the township would pay for the training. The cost would be between $50 to $150 for the training. And she would go to the other two municipalities that she collects taxes for, to ask them to, also to chip in. So, each time she'd go for training, she'd say, like, a third for us?
Okay.
And all that.
I make a motion that we authorize to pay for the training for Barbara, so she becomes certified as our township tax collector.
I second that motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Okay, you have the information from the tax, uh, cap tax meeting that was held on the 15th. We're actually in the red. You also will have, did I give you, well, I gave you, did I give you part of the draft, uh, audit in that, or not? I thought I did.
Okay.
If not, I'll get it for you.
No more action items?
No, no, this is...
Okay.
And then you got the Perry County Collection Committee meeting stuff.
Engineers report.
Uh, actually, I have no report this month, because I really didn't do any other activities. But I'd like to go back to the Morrison bond reduction issue. Uh, I understand we advise them, they need to give us a revised plan before we consider a reduction. But in response to his request, Rich, should we submit a letter back to him, send a letter to him advising him that his request was denied at this time, uh, since, since he requires a reduction?
Yeah, that's what I...
We need to do that.
That's what I told Helen, we weren't done that way.
Just wanna make sure it was done, because after 45 days, it would be deemed...
Correct, correct.
All right.
Okay, and their report?
Yep.
That was it. Thank you, Max. Police report?
I have a copy of the breakdown and the piece. We just completed a teen buckle-up grant last week, consisted of one week. We're in, we just started another aggressive driving grant, too, so, we're processing it.
Approved and recorded.
Completing that grant, that'll end in November.
Okay, all the information there's been submitted, okay? Uh, now, finally, to the swisser, so we get a recall here.
Oh, and once again, note that on the agenda, we're behind the engineer and the police, but...
I'm not sure.
I think we're only above the politicians. The only thing I have is the letter we got from the attorney. You'll recall, I think it was an August meeting, gentleman came in, talked about rights and way on his property, next to his property, wanted the township to, to get involved. We received a letter from Caldwell and Kearns, very prominent law firm in Harrisburg, asking if we would consider abandoning a township road in order that his client, Mr. Mutzaball, would be able to actually have the land that is upon which there is this, this road. I'm told by Helen that there is no public road, that this is a private road. And if that's correct, then I'd ask if that'd be verified by the, by your secretary. If it is in fact a private road and not a public road, we have no authority to abandon a private road.
Chestnut and Chilton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that was the understanding then, that it was a private road where he's asked. That's one of those Perdix streets up in, in part of the old development. It's not a township road.
It was, do we know if it was ever laid out as a township road but never dedicated?
Um, and planned back 1918 or 13 or something like that.
That's, there's actually a provision in the code that if you have a street that's laid out but not, um, offered for, for, uh, acceptance by the township, even though it's laid out, it may create certain rights for which we may have to pass an ordinance to abandon. So, I'd, I'd go out and take a look. We don't have to do it tonight, but if you take a look at it at some point, let me know. Then I get back to Mr. Lee.
Oh, I could find a little plan of it, I don't know, but we'll take a look at it.
All right.
Okay?
Other than that, I have nothing else. We discussed the only other issue earlier.
Okay, like their shoes, Richard? Does anybody else have anything else that they're gonna bring up or would like to talk about? We have the township property thing here, Rich, I think we can handle that?
Yeah, I saw the information.
Okay, saw the information. Okay, have a good evening, Richard.
Happy Halloween.
Yeah, Max.
What's that?
Amendment report?
Bodyguard.
Here for you, not my chair. Show me the pool. Bathroom, okay. Old business, correspondence, PPNL Municipal Contract Contact. PPNL would like to have a contact for someone like them for the weekend, for emergencies and et cetera. And I suggest that the township office be as a point of contact with Helen's number or cellphone number on the weekend, and the contact to the cellphone numbers of the two township employees in case we have... and the contact to the cell phone numbers of the two township employees in case we have trees, necessities to be brought out for PPNL.
Okay.
Make you the first line of contact during the week, okay?
Okay.
Made that form of a motion.
My second motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Training.
There's two webinars, one for intermediate government accounting and there's one for the Open Records Act. I couldn't go to the meeting for the Open Records Act because it's the same day of our meeting. So there would be $75 for each of those webinars. We could do it here in, in the office, over the computers. We'd like permission to do that.
What's the wish of the board, grant and permission?
I make the motion that the fees be paid for, both of you?
Yeah, well, yeah, we both be listening at the same time.
To, to attend the webinar, both of them or?
Both of them.
Both webinars that were recommended?
Yeah, they come over the computer. We can sit there and deal with customers coming in at the same time.
Okay.
My second motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Mrs. Taskcheck? No, that was the copy he had. That's my original. No, I think that's the budget, Henry. I think that's the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
First of all, ma'am, let me start out with my deepest sympathies to you and your family for your loss. I can never imagine your heart and what you're going through. And my prayers are for you and your family. I would like at this time here, with the information, you do have, you do acknowledge that you did receive the letter from the township referencing the expenses that were incurred by the township. I'd like to make a motion on the table at this time to table this until next meeting, until Ms. Taskcheck time to grieve her mourn, her loss of her family member.
Thank you. I'm a few days ahead, having my daughter and her dad too. She's the one taking care of me. So I'm very displaced.
Brian's made a motion there to table this for another 30 days. In lieu of all this, a letter sent out, and I understand her situation. But I can agree to that. If the board can agree now, but in 30 days, if we don't have action, we either file the judgment or move on.
I'd like to amend that, that motion then, that we do table this to the next meeting. With the condition that if this is not addressed in the next meeting, then we go forward with the collection of these fees.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Thank you. I have one thing before I move on, new business and budget. An old business thing here that was brought up last month. I know Lee asked a question about how the fees were for on the comprehensive plan fees. And they were broke out, Lee, over 2010, 11, 12, and 13. It was broke out over a period of those years. Okay?
You asked when they were, when they were paid?
That's when they, that's how they were paid, since the year, yep.
For the comprehensive plan?
Yep. You asked last month, you know what I'm saying? Didn't show.
And for the engineering costs.
Yes.
And that was, yep, that was broke out over, over those years. Okay, so had Helen look that up, just with that information. You have before your new business, the budget?
Uh, yes, you have the new pages there. It's been updated for, as of tonight's bills. The only changes we did was under the capital reserve. We budgeted 7,500 next year for the heating cooling units for this room and the office. That's what it came into, it came into like 7,100, 75 to round off. And then there was, that was it. There was no other updates or anything given for any of the other budget items. I just updated it for the bills due, bills paid.
If there's no other wishes or changes of the board, I make a motion that we advertise.
Can I, yeah, question about the budget?
Surely.
Line item number 409363 Sewers Municipal Building.
Yes.
We were at 618 to date for this year.
Oh, yes.
But next year we're budgeting 65,000.
No, that's an extra zero. Thank you for that. I will amend that before I advertise it. No, that's, that should be 650.
Line item 410231 Vehicle Fuel Fleet Department, 2366 to date, next year 10,000?
That's because it's divided between both Duncan and the township line items. And they, I think you paid off the borough first and then, then it's coming to us. So.
So actually, it was $20,000 for fuel last year total. The borough paid the first 10, now we're only into 2,300 of ours.
Yes.
I made the motion.
Mm-hmm.
My second motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Advertise for adoption at the November meeting?
The November meeting, yeah.
Wow, that's okay.
November, December meeting.
That's fine.
You know?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, I, so this is your budget for next year?
Yeah.
So that request that I had asked for you, you didn't even consider?
Oh, the generator.
I didn't realize your budget was going to be finalized.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So you?
The generator for EMS.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the, the budget was finalized for that and taken an awful lot of paperwork, numbers and everything else?
I'm sorry, you just, you should have just told me that.
You know what I'm saying, I?
But you, you didn't tell me, I told you that our budget was in in November and you didn't even inform me at all that you're going to be finalizing this tonight. So I'm just, I was just surprised.
It can still be amended.
Okay.
I mean.
All right, that'd be great.
I mean, it's up to them, but.
So what's your request, ma'am?
I don't know if you, we were talking, we were working on our budget at Weeful Township. And I was just checking out, one of our emergency shelters is designated as the EMS building in Duncan. There was no generator out there. And so I learned that the plan was is they're going to take a generator from Weeful Township and put it out there, which is ridiculous because then we'd have no generator at the township level. So as, we just found this out in our budget meeting, so I was trying to learn to see where Penn Township emergency shelters were designated at this point in your plan. And what I've learned is it's here and you also have Duncan EMS. And so what, we were just starting the discussion was if that's the case, if you guys, Penn Township was interested in going with us and maybe getting a generator for the EMS building, if it is going to be a designated emergency shelter, there should be a generator there.
And what type of expense are we looking at for the generator?
I mean, that's an preliminary. I know Craig had looked at it years ago. He wanted to use, we have propane out there now. But I, that's, that's what I don't know. This is, this is something we had discussed at our budget meeting yesterday.
So are we looking at 15,000, 20,000?
I don't know, Craig, do you have anything for us?
We were, we were in the 27, 29,000 dollar with installation, switchgear and everything back in 2007, I believe. So our Buildings and Grounds trustee made a call today.
I don't know if this is something that's going to happen in a year or so, but it's something I think it needs to be planned for. Can't have an emergency shelter designated and not have it, you know, ready for an emergency.
Have you looked at, trying to purchase through the purchase power of the state?
Well, the other thing is we need to look at what grants are out there too. But, you know, I just, I want to get this talk started. I just think that something needs to be done.
Now, I did mention to Brian here earlier about that request, okay? I felt that it was something that probably couldn't be put together this year or anything like that. We're pretty far along into our budget. I think you're talking, what you'd like to see done out there is a long range plan. And those things take a little bit of coordination and time to do, so.
I just appreciate the heads up on that thing.
You know?
Henry, add, add written down right here on my paper, I forgot it, public comment. Fire company generator, fire station is online. 100 KW generator, diesel, will be, this week, my father-in-law's coming this weekend, it'll be programmed to, it's, it's set up right now, if power goes out, the generator will be on. I talked with Chief Pickles about it and we are exploring grant opportunities to, for us to finish that firehouse out there the way we have it phased, the construction phased. In the preliminary stages right now, it's the generators online. So if it needs to be used as a shelter, we can make arrangements.
But is it a designated shower, shelter right now through Duncan?
We do not, I, nope.
On your emergency plan, where's your designated shelters?
Here. Tom, Tom Bell was on.
Just here?
Yeah, Tom Bell was away. He just came back today, so.
Well, you have one right now, so what is it existing now?
Here.
Well, but one inconvenience though, and we experienced during the floods of several years ago, the township isn't set up for cooking food for the amount of people that, so the food was actually cooked other places. Yes, it was. I was a part of it. I was absolutely.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, it was donated.
The majority of it was brought in through the assemblies of God, with the churches donating food and services. And it was prepared down there and then brought here.
Yeah.
So that's one inconvenience about this being an emergency shelter. It really isn't, we don't have shower facilities, we don't have housing for animals. There's a lot of things to take into consideration for being an emergency shelter. Nothing against township, it's just this building here just really isn't, meets the requirements for a true emergency shelter. With Duncan, you know, with Duncan being cut off, you know, most parts, stuff like that, it made it sometimes very hard to get food up here due to the conditions of the roads and things at that time. So I really believe that we cannot consider this building an emergency shelter efficiently. Right now, Duncan Annex Building isn't set up, though they're proposing in a plan in the very beginning stages of it. We do have a building that's already set up for it. If we can get proposals from EMS referencing to the amount, obtaining the grants, going through the state to see how much you can get off of it with the purchasing power through the state. You'd be surprised, I work for a nonprofit, we use those and NESH, the federal program, a lot. And we get very valuable discounts off the equipment fees of that.
Well, I was just, I was surprised. I mean, when we came to get the information, Helen had said EMS building and also this building were designated.
Because it.
Things right now, so that's why even, but if it's not, if you guys have not designated, fine. But I got the information that it was.
If it went over so many days, then they moved out to the EMS. If it was more than two days, people moved out to EMS. That's how Paul Fortis had it set up.
But, you know, I'm willing, that's, I just, I was just surprised. I didn't know your budget was going to be fine. But thank you.
Only because we had no opposition toward tonight to make any changes in that. Okay?
I have a question, ma'am, but.
Make it quickly.
For 1522 emergency management expense, $10 to date, $4,000 for next year.
Okay, Paul Solsus asked that 5,000 to be put in there a couple of years ago for, if we ever needed it. The $10 was for a background check for EMA that was required. That's the only thing we spent out of it so far this year. He figured 10,000, 5,000 would cover for ice, water, whatever, porta-johns if we had to get them.
Okay. Make a motion re-adjourn.
Just one moment, please. I did not get to talk to the two supervisors referencing to this. In the last several months, I have acquired some health conditions that I need to focus on my health so I can take care of my family. As of the last meeting in December of 2014, I will be resigning as township supervisor. I have new requirements at work. I need to take care of my family. As much as it hurts me, it pains me. Because I love my township and I love the people of my township. And I wouldn't want to continue undeserved. But I have to take care of myself first in order, in order for me to do that. So as of, I think our last meeting is December 17th?
Uh, yes.
As of that date, will be my final day observing as Penn Township supervisor. And I'd officially give you a letter tomorrow. I don't have it with me at this time.
Okay.
Thanks for that information, Brian. I sympathize with those that haven't been down in the hospital myself the last couple of days. Health problems are health problems. You need to address it. You may need to be taken care of, and I understand what you're saying.
I would, as a recommendation for my replacement, in consideration, without talking to him, I would like to make a recommendation that you consider Jesse Boyer as my replacement. I believe he's an honorable man. I believe he's, has integrity. And I believe that he has what the township needs to move forward and see the township grow.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
My second motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
One last thing. Henry.
Yes.
The municipal authority, did he recently attempt to receive a huge grant?
I believe they, you got notified?
We've got no notification officially.
What's that?